Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, March 13th, 2025, Marlington Local School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Josh Hagan. Karen Humphries.
Here.
Kathy Krupko.
Here.
Mark Ryan.
Here.
Jonathan Swift.
Here.
Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Swift.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting agenda?
No.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Special presentation.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to our March Board Meeting. Tonight, we're going to bring up, do our Students of the Month. We're going to be doing the Elks Students of the Month. So we have January Students, February Students, and March Students of the Month to honor tonight. So I'm going to have Mr. Farrell come off the podium and please share with us his Elks Teens of the Month.
All right, good evening. As Mr. Swisher said, I have three months' worth of our Elks Teens of the Month. So first, I have the January Elks Teens of the Month. And when I call your name, if you come up, stand here, get your certificate from Mrs. Humphries. And while I get to brag about you a little bit, then we'll get a picture afterwards. So first Elks Teen of the Month for the high school is Claire Battershell. Claire is the daughter of Mike and Janine Battershell. She is a 2024 Buckeye Girl State Delegate, member of Spanish National Honor Society, Spanish Club, Character Counts Club, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and is a Duke Crew Director. She is a member of the varsity volleyball team and also a Duke Pound Leader. In her free time, Claire enjoys playing volleyball and spending time with her family. Following graduation, she plans to attend Tiffin University to pursue a degree in education while continuing her volleyball career. Mrs. Francis wrote the following about Claire. Claire is a wonderful young lady who has left a lasting impression on me and many others. I have enjoyed having her in class and witnessing her growth as a student and an individual. She always has a smile when she walks into my room, and she is one of the hardest-working students I have. Her involvement in various school activities has allowed her to develop and demonstrate exceptional leadership skills. She has shared how teaching young children bright brings her joy and fulfillment, and I am excited to know that she will be joining the teaching profession one day. Congratulations, Claire. All right, our other January Elks Teen of the Month is Sam Yoder. Sam is the son of Daniel and Bethany Yoder. He is Student Council President and President of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He is a captain on the varsity golf, basketball, and baseball teams. He is a volunteer with the youth basketball program in camps. Sam enjoys hunting and fishing in his free time. Following graduation, he plans to pursue a business degree at Walsh University while continuing his baseball career. Pitcher, correct? Mrs. Francis wrote the following about Sam. What stands out most about Sam is his growth and maturity. Over the past four years, I have watched him grow into a well-rounded young man with a strong sense of responsibility who takes his leadership role very seriously. As the Student Council President and Captain of the basketball team, underclassmen look up to him, not only for his athletic abilities, but also for his character and his integrity. Sam is fun to have in class. He is polite, respectful, and just a little bit ornery. I can't wait to see what the future holds for Sam. That's from Mrs. Francis. Congratulations, Sam. All right, for our February Elks Teens of the Month. First up is Zoe Mort. Zoe is the daughter of Katie Mort and Carl Mort. She is a 2024 Buckeye Girl State Delegate, Vice President of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, a member of Character Counts Club, and is also a Duke Crew Director. She is a member of the varsity girls, golf, and basketball teams, and also a Duke Pound Leader. In her free time, Zoe enjoys playing volleyball and spending time with her family. Following graduation, she plans to attend Tiffin University to pursue a degree in education while continuing her volleyball career. Mrs. Francis wrote the following about Claire. Claire is a wonderful young lady who has left a lasting impression on me and many others. I have enjoyed having her in class and witnessing her growth as a student and an individual. She always has a smile when she walks into my room, and she is one of the hardest-working students I have. Her involvement in various school activities has allowed her to develop and demonstrate exceptional leadership skills. She has shared how teaching young children bright brings her joy and fulfillment, and I am excited to know that she will be joining the teaching profession one day. Congratulations, Claire. All right, our other January Elks Teen of the Month is Sam Yoder. Sam is the son of Daniel and Bethany Yoder. He is Student Council President and President of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He is a captain on the varsity golf, basketball, and baseball teams. He is a volunteer with the youth basketball program in camps. Sam enjoys hunting and fishing in his free time. Following graduation, he plans to pursue a business degree at Walsh University while continuing his baseball career. Pitcher, correct? Mrs. Francis wrote the following about Sam. What stands out most about Sam is his growth and maturity. Over the past four years, I have watched him grow into a well-rounded young man with a strong sense of responsibility who takes his leadership role very seriously. As the Student Council President and Captain of the basketball team, underclassmen look up to him, not only for his athletic abilities, but also for his character and his integrity. Sam is fun to have in class. He is polite, respectful, and just a little bit ornery. I can't wait to see what the future holds for Sam. That's from Mrs. Francis. Congratulations, Sam. All right, for our February Elks Teens of the Month. First up is Zoe Mort. Zoe is the daughter of Katie Mort and Carl Mort. She is a 2024 Buckeye Girl State Delegate, Vice President of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, a member of Character Counts Club, and is also a Duke Crew Director. She is a member of the varsity girls, golf, and basketball teams, and also a Duke Pound Leader. In her free time, Zoe volunteers at Marlboro Christian Church. She enjoys sports, spending time with her friends and family, shopping and traveling. Following graduation, Zoe plans to attend Ashland University to pursue a degree in fashion merchandising while continuing her golf career. Mr. Oyster wrote the following about Zoe. I have the pleasure of having Zoe Mort in my College Credit Plus Statistics class this year. In the classroom, Zoe is highly organized and always has her assignments done completely neatly and on time. She is enthusiastic about learning new material and is engaged in the lesson every day. Zoe is extremely gifted in mathematics and in her athletics. She is a young lady with integrity and takes pride in being a Duke. She is an exceptional role model for her peers and is admired not only by other students, but by the staff here at Marlington High School. She has a warm personality and puts a smile on the face of everyone she comes into contact with throughout the day. Congratulations, Zoe. Our next February Teen of the Month is Travis Hoffmeyer. Travis is the son of Todd and Heidi Hoffmeyer. He is a member of National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Sources of Strength, and Character Counts Club. Travis is a member of the varsity baseball team and is on the grounds crew at Tannenhoff Golf Club. Travis enjoys being outdoors, hunting, and fishing in his free time. Following graduation, he plans to pursue a degree in construction engineering technologies at the University of Akron. Ms. Wright wrote the following about Travis. With much pride and satisfaction, I have observed Travis and have been favorably impressed with his dedication to academics. Not only has Travis earned commendable grades, but he is involved in a variety of extracurricular activities. He is a person of many talents and a great personality, too. Travis is an honest, caring individual and has my highest respect. He is a very reliable and dependable person as well. Travis is always willing to help his peers and share his understanding of physics. Travis is extremely helpful when it comes to teaching his peers how to use the calculator in physics. Travis takes pride in his work, and whatever Travis chooses to do in life, he will be successful because of his unique blend of natural intelligence, determination, and devotion. Congratulations, Travis. Okay, for our March Elks Teens of the Month, first up is Gina Hoover. Gina is the daughter of Tricia Hoover. She is a member of National Honor Society, TRIAM Music Honor Society, co-president of Character Counts Club, a member of Sources of Strength, and is a Duke Crew Director. She is a member of Duke Street Select Vocal Ensemble, the Marlington Corral, Drama Dukes, and is the Choir Secretary. She was the chairperson for this year's Slam Dunk Childhood Cancer Event and is one of our Duke the Dog mascots. In her free time, Gina enjoys singing and listening to music, coloring and painting, and watching movies. Following graduation, she plans to attend the Ohio State University to major in health sciences and minor in biology. A few words from our staff about Gina. Gina is a student-centered individual who consistently prioritizes the needs and success of all of her peers. As a natural leader, she takes on the role of a peer mentor, guiding and supporting others in their academic and personal growth. Gina is highly involved in a variety of activities, always eager to contribute her time and talents to make a positive impact. Her strong work ethic and dedication are evident to everything she does, always giving her best effort to every task. Despite her busy schedule, Gina remains kind and helpful, always ready to lend a hand to those in need. Her leadership, compassion, and hard work make her an invaluable asset to any community. Congratulations, Gina. And our final March Elk Teen of the Month is Owen Mariner. Owen is the son of Brett and Elizabeth Mariner. He is a member of National Honor Society, Robotics Club, Ski Club, and Sources of Strength. Owen is a member of St. Paul's Lutheran Church. In his free time, Owen enjoys painting Warhammer miniatures and playing video games. Following graduation, he plans to attend Kent State University to study animation and game design. And I'll also add, he's been recruiting me to try to run an ultra marathon, right? With him quite a bit over the last few months. Owen Mariner is a kind and compassionate individual who consistently goes out of his way to help others. His willingness to lend a hand to classmates and peers highlights his selflessness and dedication to the well-being of all those around him. Owen's strong work ethic sets him apart as he approaches every task with focus and determination. He is a model student, always prepared and eager to engage in class discussions. His attention to detail and commitment to excellence make him a standout in any academic setting. Owen's positive attitude and unwavering dedication inspire those around him to give their best effort. Congratulations, Owen. That's all for the Teens of the Month.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to thank our families for coming out tonight. This would be the time now, before we get into the formal part of the meeting, if you wish to go enjoy the sunshine in the evening, please do so, and thank you again for coming out tonight.
Okay, invocation tonight is going to be given by Pastor Truax.
I think everyone heard I was going to pray and they all... Let's pause and give God a word of prayer. Oh Lord, we thank you as we see winter melting into spring, and we know, Lord, that good times are ahead, good times for our community, good times for Marlington. We know, Lord, that the spring brings with it lots of times of celebration and good things happening. We thank you, Lord, for the board meeting tonight. We pray, Father, for your Spirit to be here to guide and lead the board members and the staff and the public, Lord, as we all interact, as we form partnerships together for the good of the district and the good of our community. We pray, Lord, for your will to be done here and for you to lead and guide all that is said and spoken. We thank you for the building of unity in our community and the mission of education. We pray for the safety for our schools. We pray, Lord, for the blessing upon our administration and staff and teachers, Lord, everybody that is a part of the district, the students. Lord may they all grow safely and fully as we follow you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, every March for the last, this will be my year three here, I've asked Rick Baxter to speak to the board. So I'm going to have Rick come up. Rick is obviously the president of the Alliance Area Development Foundation. He's also the current president of the Alliance Area Chamber of Commerce. And I could go on. I think he sits on just about the YMCA board. He sits on the Rotary Board, and there's probably many others that I'm missing there, but he can give us an economic development update with the city of Alliance and Marlington and the surrounding areas, even up through Canton, because I know now he's tied into Canton's Area Chamber of Commerce also.
Yeah, great. Yeah, appreciate you having me out, the opportunity to come and speak to the board. One of the things to mention about the Canton Chamber, we have partnered with the Canton Chamber for many years. There was a plan through the Alt Care Plan for healthcare for small businesses. It's called the Alt Care MEWAP Plan. It was only offered to Canton Regional Chamber members. Worked with the Canton Chamber to now, we can have an associate membership as an Alliance Chamber member for $100, and then those businesses can now participate in the Alt Care MEWAP Plan. Being Alt Care and Alliance, Altman Hospital Alliance, it only made sense. The new Jeff Dattler, the new president of the Chamber, and I worked real hard to kind of get all that put together. So it's a good thing for our Alliance business to get an opportunity to be a part of that healthcare plan. Some other major things, as you well know, we've had a lot of activity in the Alliance area, especially on State Street. Meyer opened up in May of last year. Raisin Canes, as you see up just recently across from Marks is the Take Five Oil Change. Soon to be next to them will be the Chick-fil-A that's coming. Had a conversation with the potential franchisee. He is from the Canfield area. He's really, really excited, asking a lot of questions about Alliance, and he really, really wants to get involved. And I mentioned about Marlington School District. Hey, have your kids come and live in Marlington School District. So he's definitely heard a lot of good things about our area. So that's exciting. The A1 Japan Steakhouse is open now. We're having a grand opening for them on Monday. So if you're available at 10 o'clock, we're going to do ribbon cutting. They're going to have lots of prizes and things to give away, but another nice addition to our town as far as food goes. Pulp Smoothie, I believe, from what I've heard, is possibly opening next week. There's been a lot of talk about a nice, healthy choice, so Pulp Smoothie will be a nice one to have open up here soon. And next to them is the Cantina Jalisco. It's a little bit different style of restaurant than Jalisco's that we normally go on every Tuesday for Taco Tuesday, right? But this one will be a little bit more of a bar and more of a street taco-type of environment. But they are planning to open, I believe, sometime in the month of April, so that's coming along. Their sign just went up today. The Mod Wash, which opened up last year, interesting statistic about Mod Wash. They have over 100 locations throughout the United States, a lot of them down south. The Mod Wash in Alliance, Ohio was the fastest to 1,000 members out of all of their locations throughout the country. So I guess we like clean cars and we like chicken, so we have a lot of good things happening with that. So I thought that was a neat statistic that shows how well our Alliance community supports businesses. IML Containers, as you know, opened up on our industrial park. I'm actually going out there in April to kind of take a tour and take my board out there. They have created about 30 jobs in the Alliance area. They're looking at adding a second line with what they do. They make a lot of products for the food manufacturing business, and they're going to add another line. They also have plastic, wood, and cardboard types of products. But they're looking at creating probably another 30 jobs in the next probably two or three years, so that's exciting. The 50 Acres that's next to it has been looked at a couple of times. We had a really big company that we were down to the final two. Unfortunately, we didn't get the final cut, but we were really close. It would have brought about 250 jobs here. But we have since stepped up our marketing plan. We're working with a company called Cresco Real Estate. They're a national company out of Cleveland, and we're really marketing that property. We've got every detail on the property done, from how much water is provided, how much electricity. We even had a Phase 1 done on the property. So as a business, these companies that are looking to come to the United States to manufacture, they want property that is ready to go. And so we've pretty much spelled everything out so that it can be ready to go, and it has rail access, which is another good selling point. So we're hopeful to get that, a big business attracted to that 50 acres here sometime soon. Other businesses that have opened throughout Alliance, Harbor Freight down on the east side, along with Rhino Self-Storage. Those opened up. We have a Stark Fresh Grocery Store in downtown that opened up in the Alliance Commons. If you haven't been to the Alliance Commons, I encourage you to go check it out. There's probably about 20 or 20-plus nonprofit organizations that are in there. It's kind of a one-stop shop for everything from people that need to get assistance with their medical supplies or things like that, for pharmacies. There's a place called Beacon Pharmacy. Men's Challenge has a spot there. The Habitat has a spot there. But it's really a one-stop shop for anybody that needs help. Send them to the Alliance Commons for pretty much anything that they could possibly need. It's a really great place. Also, Sky High Fitness has a space in downtown Alliance. He does a lot of training. Probably a lot of our Marlington athletes are going there to train with Darryl Solins Jr. He's a great trainer, graduate from Mount. He trains a lot of high school and college athletes. He's doing really well. Zook Coffee is getting ready to open up downtown, a little coffee shop. We're also getting another Mexican restaurant downtown called Spicy Burrito. If you've ever been to Hartville, to the Mikasa Restaurant, it's the same owners. They're going to be opening up in downtown Alliance where the old Bun Insurance Agency used to be. So another Mexican option for us. Our Downtown Caboose, we have six summer concerts planned, and most of those are going to be all on Final Friday. So if you're not doing anything on a Final Friday of the month, starting in the month of May, come on down to the Caboose. We're going to have lots of music and food trucks and festivities happening downtown. We're also working with the city to do an upgrade to that facility and make it really to a full-scale amphitheater, which is exciting, so we can continue to attract more activities and things to do for that. We have a concert series of Jimmy and the Soulblazers, John Hampu Band, Back to Eden, which was here last year. Do a lot of 70s music. We also have Vocal Fusion, an a cappella group that's from Canton. It's really fantastic. And then New Wave Nation will close us off in the month of September. And then we also have in August, Alliance of Churches Music Festival. We have about five churches. I know John Truax and I kind of started to put that together, and it's probably one of our biggest-attended events of the year. We have five local praise teams that all get together, and we just have music, and we give away free food, and everybody comes and just has a good time, so that's a really fun time, too. Our Farmer's Market will be opening up on June 21st. That's going to be moving back downtown. That's going to be June 21st on Saturdays from 9:00 until 1:00. We have lots of vendors as far as fresh fruit. There's meat, there's bread, there's also crafters that are down there. So that'll run through October 4th. And then some other things we're working on, we're trying to work with some developers to get some new housing in the Washington Hills area. That's been a development that has been just kind of not really, kind of continued to grow. I think there's some developers we've been working with to try to help spur that on a little bit. So I think there was a housing study done in June by the Stark Economic Development Board, and just found out that, it just seems like there's a lot of people that want to have houses, but they don't want to buy them. They would rather rent a house for $1,500 to $2,000 a month. If you look at the Redwood Apartments, you go to 62 out there in Lewisville, they've got a waiting list. And it just seems to be the new way that kids buy houses nowadays, not the way I was raised, you know? Buy a house, build equity, that type of thing. They want to rent so they can kind of come and go and things like that. But there's a lot of stuff that's being put into that study to find what key housing, type of housing, we can build to attract people here. And then also, we have three local companies that are looking at some expansions. You'll probably hear more about that, but that's totaling probably well over $20 million in investment in expansions, probably close to 40 to 50 new jobs. So it's exciting to see our local companies that are growing a lot and expanding. So you'll probably hear more about those as we get further down the road, but that's a little update on what's going on. Any questions?
Questions?
Awesome. Great before. That's a great before.
Yeah, a lot of good things happening, so thanks for the opportunity to come. Appreciate it. Yep.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, moving on from there. We're going to have a curriculum update, so I'm going to have Ms. Renee Kaylee come on up and give an update to the board on a few items that she's reached out to you guys recently, just to make sure we're clear on what's going on in our direction lately here at the district.
All right, good evening. Thank you. So we are going to take a few moments this evening... Oh man, I feel you sound like you guys are so far away. To do a Benchmark Advanced update, which is that it's our K5 core curriculum that we adopted. Also talk a little bit about our Engineering Career Tech Pathway, which will then lead us into our Marlington High School program of studies. So as you know, we went through a rigorous process to determine the K5 core ELA curriculum that we were going to propose to the board, and then the board adopted last year for our kindergarten through fifth-grade students. We have been successfully implementing that since the beginning of the school year in September. We wanted to make sure they are 100% aligned with Ohio's learning standards and the science of reading, and our overall goal was to improve our literacy outcomes and instructional consistency across not only all grade levels, but across all buildings as well. So beginning last year, we had some initial trainings with our Benchmark Advanced experts. We've had ongoing support throughout this year through what we call grade-level pullouts, where we're getting, since we have teachers in grade levels across three buildings, we're pulling those grade-level teachers together, allowing them an opportunity to meet and collaborate and plan together just to get to know the resources, as well as talk about best practices. We've brought in, continued to bring in the Benchmark experts. That was part of what we purchased. We purchased professional learning along with the actual curriculum resources. We've been doing that in person. We also have a virtual option there as well. There's a lot of different videos and things on the platform that teachers have access to. There's a lot of different videos and things on the platform that teachers have access to at their leisure. And then we also have our instructional coach for the K5 classrooms. She has been going in and coaching, modeling and providing feedback to the teachers throughout the duration, or throughout the school year since September. Some of the main instructional shifts when you're thinking about what we were doing prior to the implementation of this curriculum, with our K2 Phonics and Phonemic Awareness, we really have that structured systematic approach that aligns with the science of reading, that also integrates with our core curriculum. We were doing wonderful things before when it comes to that K2 Phonics and Phonemic Awareness. If you remember, we were doing Hagrid and we were doing Fundations. We're still doing Hagrid because it's a quick practice every day for students in grades K through two and it doesn't take away from our overall program with Benchmark. In grades three through five, with reading comprehension and vocabulary, we've seen an increased focus on text evidence and explicit instruction. Our students are now able to begin what they call annotating, which is marking up their books and responding to text beginning in first grade. I will tell you, just talking to teachers, lots of different comments from kindergarten teachers saying, I never knew kids could have this type of vocabulary, right? So because it is rigorous, it is exposing them to things that maybe we didn't necessarily expose them to before in a, in a positive way. And also that vocabulary piece with the writing, the right, the amount of writing and the quality of writing we are seeing just in this short period of time from September to March is incredible. Even our students are struggling students. We're seeing them being able to make, you know, where we sometimes would say we struggle to write a paragraph, those students are now writing a multi-paragraph essay. We're talking about like our fourth and fifth grade students there. And then continuing on like student engagement and early data, we are seeing an increase in student engagement with just the diverse high-quality texts. That was one of the things that, that drew us to this curriculum was that kids would have their hands on actual books and it wasn't just going to be like an anthology that they were looking at. They have actual books in their hands. Our early assessment data from fall to winter, we see a lot of improvements with K2 Phonics. We see fewer students in that urgent intervention kind of tier, which hopefully that's the goal, right? We want to see less students needing that tier, those tiers two and three supports. We've seen a growth in our vocabulary and our comprehension and just some of our formative classroom data is showing stronger performance in comprehension and writing. So just very positive. Some of the challenges, not, you know, I would be remiss if I said that it's easy. Implementing a, a brand new curriculum, K to five is not easy. There are going to be roadblocks, there are going to be things that we have to discuss as we kind of pace ourselves through. One of those, we're pacing concerns, we're just talking about, you know, making sure that we get everything that we need to get in before we have assessments in grades three, four and five. Being that it's the first year, we aren't going through things maybe as quickly as we will in the future because we're getting to know the, the program. So we've been having meetings with our implementation team, material management, just getting to know the materials, just like anything else. It's brand new, so we're getting to know our resources. And as we get more familiar and more comfortable with those, it, it'll, it won't be a concern anymore, right? We'll know how to utilize those. And then just that continued professional learning, we're going to be focusing on that differentiated instruction and that small group support. How do we make, ensure that we're meeting the needs of each and every child? So our next steps, we're going to continue to refine our instructional pacing based on the teacher feedback. We're going to continue that data analysis to keep guiding our interventions. We will continue to have ongoing professional development just to ensure that long-term success. And I'm actually going to propose to the board in the April meeting that we, we adopt Benchmark Advanced for grade six at Marlington Middle School. Benchmark only goes up through grade six. I've had lots of meetings with Mr. Rizaletti. Our current sixth grade teachers are piloting Benchmark currently. What we love about it is it would bridge that gap between our elementaries and the middle school and give them a transitional year with curriculum that they're used to in K to five. So that is something that we will be hopefully on the board agenda for vote in April. Any questions about Benchmark before I kind of transition us into our, some exciting news about our engineering pathway? I will tell you also, just to kind of toot our, our teachers' horns and our principals' horns, we actually had Sandy Valley come in and observe classroom instruction because Benchmark is one of their finalists for adoption. They went to Washington, Mr. Swan Deal graciously hosted them and allowed them an opportunity to come in and, and observe our teachers, teaching very vulnerable, right? Our teachers are new at teaching this curriculum, but yet they're open to helping and supporting our colleagues across, across the county. And then we actually are hosting Lewisville next Wednesday at Lexington. So they're going to come in and do the same thing. They're going to go into some classrooms, have an opportunity to ask teachers some questions. So we're happy to be able to facilitate that dialogue across the county.
What are the options for seventh and eighth grade if Benchmark did not come?
There's lots of different things. Right now, we are seeing like, we are, I apologize, it's going to, it'll come to me as I'm like mid-career test, right? So one of the, one of the resources that we are using, it really heavily aligns with the standards and we're seeing a lot of success with it and it's free. So there are a lot of resources. I think what we, what will probably end up happening is once we get board approval to adopt Benchmark in sixth grade, we're going to see that consistency in the spiraling up to six. And so I think that we've already started having conversations about what that could look at, look like at high school as well. So that might be like a seven 12 or a seven 10 curriculum then, right? Looking at something like that. So that would be a different conversation in respect to where we're going to kind of move it to the secondary shift then.
Okay.
I can, I can see that happening and those conversations are already happening at our district leadership team.
Good question.
All right. So talking about, this is going to kind of segue us into our program of studies. So really excited to announce that we have revamped our engineering program with Mr. Denny. Prior to this year, or up through this year, students were able to take engineering courses kind of freely. And we said it was career tech, but it did not follow our actual career tech model in that our juniors and seniors take, our juniors take it first and second periods, our senior career tech students take it third and fourth, and then we provide electives in the afternoon to kind of get your feet wet and get you excited about a particular career pathway. So that is what we are transitioning to for next year, where it will be a true career tech pathway that is consistent with our other career tech education programs here at Marlington. But accompany that, we are excited to partner with the University of Mount Union. We are going to be the first school in the state of Ohio to offer CCP with the engineering course. They've had lots of requests for that. They are excited with us being kind of in their backyard or them in our backyard, that we are going to partner with them and offer a college credit plus option to our Intro to Engineering course, which is our junior level course. And then if, then what that means is those students would be able to earn college credit towards an engineering degree elsewhere, or at Mount Union, if they choose to go to Mount Union. The goal of that is then in the senior year, if everything goes well, so it's considered their Engineering 110 is the actual course at Mount Union. If everything goes well, then the goal is to then incorporate a CCP option in the Engineering 120 course, which is equivalent to our Senior Capstone course with Mr. Denny. So once again, it's not changing our program at all in regards to the content that students will be, have access to. It's just giving them the option to earn that college credit while they're already taking that course.
Do we have teachers that are certified to do that?
Mr. Denny is, yes. Yep. So he had worked diligently to make sure with the department chair from Mount Union, the dean of engineering, so that he had his credentials. And yes, we have the letter with a stamp of approval saying that he is credentialed to teach that course, or those courses, once hopefully there will be more than one after this year. And we're really just looking to strengthen the connection. One of the things when Mr. Farrell and our school counselors and I met with Mount Union last Friday, we really talked about how to utilize them and build that partnership, being able to go in and use their labs and, and our students having access to some of the equipment there and being able to bring in more industry recognized partnerships. And that leads into that next one, just building those relationships with our local manufacturing, manufacturers and engineering firms like Morgan Engineering and SES. We want to make sure that we are utilizing them once again. They're in our neighborhood, they're part of our community. How can we ensure that our students are getting internships and doing job shadowing and those types of things and getting real world experiences through these classes? So our next steps with this is just finalizing those course integrations with the industry needs, using our advisory board meetings to stay up to date on what the industries are, that the demand is and ensuring that we are providing that to our students so that they're marketable when they leave, when they leave Marlington. And then just continuing to develop that long-term sustainability through partnerships and funding sources. You know, we were able to do a lot this year with our coding, with the grant that we've received. So just consistently looking at opportunities to secure funding sources, equipment, and hopefully that'll come through those partnerships. That stuff is not cheap. Robotic arms and, and things like that come with a, a pretty hefty price tag. So hopefully those partnerships will allow us to continue to update and upgrade our equipment.
Can you tell the board that you did apply for your grant team, which you did for that?
I don't want to talk about that. No, I'm just kidding. We didn't get it. So yeah, we worked really hard to apply for, there was a, a career tech grant. It was for advanced manufacturing and engineering and science pathways, right? And it was through Batel, so it wasn't through the state. And it was a pretty rigorous process. They asked lots of questions, lots of narrative. We applied, there were over 100 of us on a webinar when they did the informational session. I told Mr. Swisher I was a little defeated after that because they were only awarding up to 10 high schools, not districts, high schools. And so when I heard that, I was like, oh, there were a lot of people on there. We got really good feedback, you know, that we're doing the right things. I don't know who received them. I, I have to look on their, on their website. The last time I checked, I didn't see a list of schools, high schools that had received it. But we applied for, they had $1.7 million to distribute. So if you do the math, 1.7 divided by 10, about 170,000. And what we did was everything we put in that grant, we're doing with the exception of the updated equipment. We asked for some fanatic robotic arms, updated CNC mills that would have allowed our students to then apply what they were learning.
Were these Ohio schools on the webinar or were they all over the country?
Just Ohio.
Just Ohio.
Just Ohio. And they were looking for a variety of things. They were looking at different typologies, like so your urban, your rural, your small town, your, you know, all of those. They were also looking at existing programs versus programs that were just starting, you know? So we would have fallen, fallen under small town and we also are an existing, an existing program. So I, I didn't get any reason, you know, why we didn't get it, right? It's just, there was, they said everything that you turned in was good, you know, we appreciate it, you're doing great work. But that was the extent. It's not like when you apply for things through the state where they will give you a rubric and let you see how you score. So like if you were to apply for it again, you know, areas in which maybe were some areas where you could strengthen your application, that didn't happen with this one, so.
Private nonprofit?
I don't know if they're nonprofit or not. It's a, it's a company.
It's a company.
Yeah, it's a company. I don't, I don't.
Batel.
Batel.
Renee, what's the enrollment of the engineering?
Well, for next year, with the true way that it's going to look, I believe we have 15 juniors, current sophomores, signed up to take it next year, which that's our sweet spot. We want to be between 15 and 25 students. So, and that can, I can only anticipate that it's going to increase as we start to build these partnerships and not only with local universities, but with industry partners as well. So the last I checked on our spreadsheet that we share with Alliance, I think we had 15 students currently signed up between us and Alliance, our students and Alliance students. But the max would be 25. We would not accept more than.
How many seniors do you have currently?
Oh, Mr. Farrell, do you know that? I don't know that off the top of my head. How many, like right now, speaking the course? This is what's hard about it because, here's why we're, here's kind of why we're changing and I'm going to get to your, and kind of answer your question in a second. In the career tech world, if you take two courses that are in like the same silo, right? So engineering is in this certain silo. If I take two courses in there, I now become a concentrator, which means I'm concentrating in that career pathway, right? What was happening is we have concentrators, but they never go into a true career tech pathway, so they don't become concentrator, they don't become completers. So we have concentrators, but not completers. And what that does is it does impact our report card, right? Because we have kids taking classes, but they're not finishing. So the way that we've restructured it, they'll be able to take some of these electives, they're coded as electives, so they won't count, they won't count towards like a concentrator. And then once they become a junior, they become, that's once they've taken their two courses, now they're a concentrator and we're hoping and praying that they go into their senior year and become a completer. Does that make sense? So the way that we're doing it currently.
How many classes would that require to complete?
Yeah. So two, their junior year. So it's two year-long classes their junior year and then two year-long classes their senior year. So it would be as a junior, it would be my first and second period class. I'd be with Mr. Denny. And then if I'm a senior, it's the third and fourth period class. And then the afternoon are set aside for those elective and we'll talk about that when we get into the program of studies, like Intro to Aerospace, right? To try to get kids, freshmen, sophomores excited about engineering and get a taste of what that could look like. We're also doing a STEM one and a STEM two where our robotics is kind of broken up into there. So just getting, getting students excited and interested in that field. So I don't know, to be honest with you, Ms. Ryan, I can get back with you. I'm not quite sure what that total is because I'm looking at for next year, you know? And so we'll have one kind of like with Mr. Kendall's class this year, our seniors next year are going to kind of be, well, they aren't. They will be under like the old program and they'll be finishing out. So they'll be taking their capstone and aerospace and then next year's juniors are starting our new pathway. So it'll be like a transition year. So we're excited. I mean, we're excited to partner with Mount Union. I think we have some really neat things in store for us. I like, I like being the first, right? The first district to partner with them. I like to be able to say that. I think that goes to show the work that we're doing here. People are, are wanting to be a part of that because they, they sat right in that meeting and said, we've had lots of school districts ask and so probably be open up.
Kind of noticed what Renee, Mr. Farrell and the high school and the counselor's office, they're kind of, they started with coding, you know, with Mr. Kendall, that was different. You know, we needed to rebrand our career tech if we're, to continue to grow as a district, is really what we're trying to do. But we have, you know, so this is another step engineering and, you know, as we need to move forward in the next, you know, few years, we need to make sure as we look at, you know, our landscaping and our horde and our ag and our other functions, we need to make sure that we're branding it right, meeting the needs of what has changed so we can make sure we continue to get students to do that. But it just takes time.
And we're taking advantage of funding opportunities, right? So what's being funded through the state currently trying to apply and take advantage of those. And it's all right now with advanced manufacturing, engineering, coding, all the, anything with technology. All right. Any questions before? All right. So the program of studies, this was said to you all, I believe, back in February originally and then I sent an update this week only because we wanted to incorporate now the items with the updated career tech pathway with engineering. I am going to go quickly through this. If you have questions, please, please stop me because I'm going to turn around and kind of look down here if you don't mind. Here is our actual program of studies. So just going through those quick changes, we did change the, lots were just name changes, things of that sort, financial literacy. It is now a requirement for all students. So it's on page six that was updated to show that it's a, it's a requirement for all students. There we go. That's page six. Page seven, eight, nine and 10 all deal with the new honors diploma. So there's a new honors diploma requirements per the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. There's a new honors diploma for career tech and there's also a new STEM honors diploma requirement. So these are not anything that we've come up with. These are strictly from the Department of Education and Workforce and those are in, are in here. of Education and Workforce and those are in, are in here. We did add SchoolLinks. SchoolLinks is a resource that we are hoping, Mr. Farrell and I are hoping to share with you, maybe in April or May. What it is, is it's a, it's a really neat platform that we have used this year for the first time. We're implementing it at the high school. Lots of different features with it that include scheduling, it includes being able to look at colleges and take aptitude tests and be able to link those to different colleges. You could do virtual site visits, virtual job visits on the platform. So we will, we wanted to add that to our, the scholarships section because there's also, you could go onto SchoolLinks and see different scholarships as well and what you can apply for. Lots of different resources with SchoolLinks. We did, on pages 14 and 15, let me get down here, we also edited career exploration to include SchoolLinks because that is, once again, one of the platforms that we are using for students to be able to explore different career opportunities. On page 21, we did clarify co-valedictorians. Let me make this a little larger. I apologize that I have to scroll through this, that's the easiest way to do this. So when we talk about the co-valedictorians, to be honored at graduation as a valedictorian or salutatorian, a student must be enrolled at Marlington High School at the beginning of his or her freshman year of high school. This is, this has not changed. And then the determination will proceed as follows, using the seventh semester cumulative grade point average. So you're going through all of these, right? This is what we use to determine our valedictorian. What we wanted to add in here is that if all qualifications result in a tie, co-valedictorians will be recognized. So if we go through all of these and we have two kids that are neck and neck and there's no difference between them, we would like to have co-valedictorians. And then the next ranking would be the salutatorian. That just, that goes with what most districts are doing.
Currently, just to clear the board, this is not something that's came up in our high school, but we are following suit with some, we're following similar suit with other high schools of, you know, if we get into a position where we have identical students with identical test scores and, you know, based on that criteria down, what do we do? We just can't keep going, you run out of options.
There's going to be a tiebreaker.
You know, so, you know, districts have moved to the, in the scenario that that's happened, they have done a co-valedictorian option.
Call me traditional, I believe we should have one valedictorian.
Fair enough.
I'm not opposed to the change in policy, I just want, for record, I support one valedictorian.
Fair enough.
Software, so then the other things have to do, the software and web design updated to include senior level courses because this year, Mr. Kendall's class was still, the seniors were finishing up the prior pathway, the juniors were the new, first ones in the new pathway. We had to add the senior level courses in for next year for those juniors. So, and that's what it'll be moving forward. So those changes were made on page 31. And then the remainder of the changes had to do with what I just talked about in regards to the engineering pathway. So you'll have on page 33, it talks about engineering one and two with CCP option, is updated to the true career tech model. And I'll go to page 33. And then STEM fall and spring, those are those new electives that will take place in the, in the afternoon that Mr. Denny will be teaching and that is on page 34 and it talks about that. And then the last part would be that introduction to aerospace. The introduction to aerospace is what's another one of the electives that'll be offered in the afternoon to entice students to look into the engineering field. Other than that, those are all the changes that are made. I know that Mr. Farrell, Ms. Arrington, Mrs. Arrington and Mrs. Joyce go over this with a fine-tooth comb every single year, anytime there are updates that come down from the state, you know, that have to be reflected in here, they're, they're doing that as well. So we appreciate the opportunity to be able to share this with you and, you know, solicit feedback and be able to move forward with, with the program of studies.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any questions or about the program study?
Thank you.
You thank you.
Okay, next up would be Mrs. Kathy Krupko, if she has any information from OSBA.
Regional spring conferences are being held during the month of March. I think everybody got an invitation for our area one. March 11th is an important date slash deadline. Students can register to participate in Military Signing Day, which is hosted by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce to recognize Ohio students committed to the military service. March 27th is the deadline to nominate local companies to the OSBA Business Honor Roll and the OSBA Board Leadership Institute is coming up in May, I believe. And other than that, I sat in on an energy webinar today where they're talking about Senate Bill Two and House Bill 16 and how it's going to impact funding to the schools. I think at some point because of that, we need to really have Bob and Dan formulate a letter on behalf of the board and let our legislators know how these brilliant ideas that they come up with are actually impacting our kids and the education that we're able to provide for them.
I'm going to touch base a little bit tonight on that.
At this point, it's looking like 80% of our funding is going to start coming from property taxes and they just keep increasing it. Several years ago, it was 46% and every few years it rises and we're hedging up on 80% and it's just not reasonable.
Agreed.
So we need to do something or let our voice be heard on what, what they're doing to our school and our students and how it impacts them. That's all I have.
I like it. I will be talking a little bit about that tonight, more in April, May, but I will touch base a little bit on it tonight, which you'll be coming, coming.
If you want to, I don't know if either one of you sat in on that, but it's recorded so you can go back and watch it.
I did not, but I'm very familiar with Senate Bill 160. Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Krupko? Thank you. Okay, get on to my report. All right, welcome to our March meeting. Feels like we've been a little bit here since we've, we've got together. Again, I'll stick to, we're going to talk some, a little bit of reasons to celebrate here and now, you know, we had a lot, lot to celebrate the last three months, just going to pick a few things that we've missed that would have kind of come up on there. One of the first things I want to talk about is, is our school counselors. You know, this is the time of year where I, they're just kind of like underrepresented, we don't talk about them enough. I know there's like, there's a week for everything anymore, but at, at the end of the day, we, we don't talk about all that they do. From the left, you got Jaclyn Knock there that, you know, is one of our school counselors new this year, she does a phenomenal job and you have Jody Fellers and Siobhan there, kind of going across from left to right. You got Ashlyn Mitchell there in the middle, you got Kylie Shackle, then our, from the middle school, then our high school, we have, you know, Mrs. Bree Arrington, Mrs. Merrith Joyce, and then obviously our new added addition, Gibson the Dog. I could bring any principal up here, they could tell you at Lang, you know, based on a school our size, we were very blessed to have the counselors we have. Now, when I, when I put Jody and Ashlyn in there, they're not really actually school counselors, they're CNA counselors, but we treat them that way. I mean, they're only here at best maybe one day a week or two days a week as a, in a partnership with child and adolescent. I mean, but our true, you know, counselors that we employ from our point are just, you know, Jaclyn, Siobhan, Kylie, Merrith and Bree, you know, and it's hard to put in perspective when they're dealing with academic support, social emotional support, crisis intervention, college and career readiness, attendance, behavior, school culture, family engagement, you know, the general needs of a child on a daily basis just to see what's going on because they could have had a good or bad day from home that could totally slow them down. Scheduling, you know, depending on where you're at when you're talking about Kylie, Merrith or Bree, it's, it's just very, we're very thankful and blessed with what we have. And I, I can't thank them enough for what they do, what they give our kids, what they give our administrators and what they give our staff. I mean, they're, they're, they're just a tremendous support that we have, so I can't thank them enough. Moving on, our board, January, it's now March, but January is Board Appreciation Month. So we, we didn't, we met in January early, but we did not have a late January meeting. In February, obviously, we, we did not have a meeting, so we're into March, but we do, we do want to thank the board. Personally, for myself, there was some gifts from our horticulture building, gifts from our staff. You know, I'm going to show you a video, some has a video, so they, this is a short video here, I think that's good. Hey, Beth, is there any?
Thank you, Mrs. Krupko, for sharing your passion with our district.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you, Mrs. Swift, for helping us get the best education possible.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you, Mr. Hagan, for carrying the metal power education.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you, Mrs. Krupko, for helping our all-wealthy world.
Thank you!
I personally wish to go. Tell the truth then.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for generously sharing your time with our district.
Thank you!
Thank you, Mr. Seshar, for leading our district.
Thank you!
Thank you!
Thank you, Mr. Boss, for helping our district make money.
Thank you!
Thank you for sharing your heart with our school.
Switch to our most affordable unlimited phone with my uncle.
You missed your, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you!
You have some cards and some other items from each of our, our buildings that just, they do, they, it's hard, they got to understand what a board does, I'm sure a lot of the kids don't. I mean, I can, I'm hoping our public understands. I appreciate the vision and goals you guys set for Bob and I, for the district. It helps support student access, you guys got to support fiscal responsibility, you have to advocate for public education, you have to work on a positive school climate. And your willingness to work together for the last three years that I've been on the board is just a testament to how important this district is to you guys. So I just, I just want to say thank you. So.
Especially working with each other.
It's a tough group.
So anyways, congratulations on Board Month. Thanks. Two months late, apologize for that. Also, we had celebrity readers. So out of Marlboro, we had a, boy, take, take a look up there, Ms. Kitty Mort sitting back there, but she invites pretty much anybody that wants to come out from, you know, board members, administrators, to community members in our, in any of our three towns, has to come out and read to the kids. As you can see up there, we have some of our board members, Mrs. Krupko's in there, Mr. Swift, Mr. Ryan and Mr. Hagan, all reading to the youngsters there at Marlboro. And then we have somebody, our curriculum director there, Mrs. Kaylee was in there, we have Mr. Lamakusa there and we have a few others, this is from Mount and probably I think somebody from the Lexington Fire Department, or Marlboro's Fire Department, sorry, apologize, Marlboro's Fire Department, yeah, so I can't. So, we appreciate, so that was fun. I have got to do that every year, I could not make it that day, so unfortunately it did not work out for me. We typically, as we said, we do Students of the Month. This is a little bit of a change, but I, I do want to honor them. So we do have January, February, March Students of the Months in our elementary and middle school, you know, that they honor. So, you know, these are our Lexington, January, February and March Students of the Month. So over there on the, on the left-hand side is Camille Denny, is the fifth grade, obviously Quanis Student of the Month for that. And in February, we have Madeline Williamson. And then over on the right, for our March Student of the Month is Emory Mothersbaugh. So we, we did want to give a chance to honor them and I know in the schools are doing something special for each one of those fifth grade students of the month. At Marlboro, there, we have our Students of the Month from Marlboro and you can see right there, Kitty was kind enough where she took pictures by their sign. So we got our Students of the Month there. So January was actually Tristan Mitchell there in the middle. And then in February was Silas Shoemaker. And then obviously in March was Hayden Lang. So they're very excited. Kitty's, Kitty will tell me, she goes, oh, that, I want a new sign because it's a hard time getting those letters to stick on there, it's a lot of tape on there, she's just going to tell me. Washington Elementary, again, we have our three Students of the Month there. So our January Student of the Month, now, these aren't, for some reason, we didn't put these in order, so if you go all the way over to the right is Kalen Wilson, she is the January Student of the Month. And then our February Student of the Month is in the, all the way to the left, I apologize, there's Riley Castellucci, make sure you get the names right. Then our March Student of the Month is in the middle and that's Linda Keely. Want to congratulate them. Then at our middle school, we have our middle school Students of the Month. So in January, there's the Students of the Month, we had two for the eighth grade students, we had Jillian Begunovich and Ryan Rhodes. In February, we had two, we had Chloe Hunter right there and then obviously not pictured in there is Alex Hammond. And then our March Students of the Month for the middle school is Kat Denny and Landon Nelson. Congratulations to them at the middle school. So the, each of the K8 or the middle school and the elementaries have done something or will be doing something for those Students of the Month, you know, to go through that. So we really want to thank them. All right, where we're kind of at right now, we're moving forward, it kind of has a combination of both, so I'm not taking up too much of your time. So in the next few months, I'm going to just be continually calling it a district update. So I'm going to be talking about, not, not tonight, but I'm going to be talking about retirements, as I always do, resignations, anybody that's leaving and, you know, potential staffing for '24, '25. I say potential because we're really in a unique, you know, every year I've, I've never really added things, you know, like, you know, two years ago, I, we, we obviously had a lot of staff leaving, we looked at those retirements, resignations and made appropriate cuts to, you know, to kind of, as I called it then, right the ship to help fiscally. Last year, again, we made, based on retirements or through attrition, we made some adjustments and had, did not replace certain staff members, so we got to continue to look at that. It's more important than ever now, when you, when you talk about, when I say the legislative update and the possible effects on this district, and obviously then, of course, that falls into planning for the five-year forecast, which are all going to be coming within the next few months, you know, in things I talk about. And so I'm just going to give you a, like a snapshot here. So let's, let's just in general, we're going to, let's just talk about House Bill 96. All right, this is the governor's, the governor's proposal for the biennium budget. And this is, put this in perspective, so I just boiled down to Stark County, all right? And I highlighted in green, Marlington Local. So this is pretty much what they say is a true projection of what Marlington will receive and a change of money that Marlington's going to receive starting this June or July in our new fiscal year. So typically, we are a guaranteed district, so for the last few years, three, four years, we're just, we just get the same amount of money, state foundation money, every single year. Okay, that's what comes out. Well, now we have a new budget, we have new, we're in a lame duck session, we have a Senate and senators and the legislative side. Basically, they're going to be discussing how to move forward. If you look there for '25, '26 change, $520,000 is what we anticipate a cut right here coming this summer.
Do they have metric, a metric that they're going by? Because the one thing I see up here that's kind of shocking is in Stark County, we're one of only two schools that's getting a 5% decrease in our funding. Why is, why is that percentage? Yeah, Ossenberg and us, why?
So I can get in, I'll get into a little bit in the next few months about the layman's terms because these are all speculation. It hasn't been voted on, but this is about as close as they're going to come. Now, if you look at FY '26, '27, the following year, 516,000. If you look at all the way over to the far right from the, for the biennium change, they look at cutting Marlington Local Schools $1.5 million.
I understand why some schools aren't even getting a cut.
So that is one of, I'll talk about three bills here real quick and I'll come back to this. So as Kathy mentioned, Senate Bill 116 is sitting on the table. So the legislators in their infinite wisdom, and I'm a conservative, let me be very clear, thinks that Senate Bill 116 is basically a bill on tangible personal property tax for pipelines only. And they want to change how the pipelines pay from 88% to 25% to school districts and basically take that money and give it back to the pipelines. And basically, take that money and give it back to the pipelines.
Wow.
So if that passes, your nexus money that you currently get would tremendously drop.
They're talking about grandfathering, but...
And that could be. Like I said, this is just looming, like, when you say have discussions with your legislator, these are things that are not passed, but sitting there in presentation to legislators that got...
I mean, have any of these guys in Columbus actually been inside a public school in the last 10 years?
No. And I can tell you, I've, I've sat with the treasures in Stark County. So has Bob. We've sat with the superintendents. You've never seen a group of treasures that you can bring in any of our 20-some treasures in this county, and they're all gonna tell you the same thing. They've never been more uneasy or scared in their life about what is possibly coming to public education. Then you have, sitting out there, the third bill. Remember, if you remember a few months ago, back in December, I said there's buckets. All these buckets are looming out there that could affect Marlington. I basically said there's four buckets, is how I look at it, that affects our district. Bucket one is Senate, House Bill 96, the governor's biennial budget. The way it looks, yeah, we're gonna take a big hit. How do we accomplish in coming up with that type of money? Trimming what we've trimmed and continue to trim. Then you got Senate Bill 116, if they mess with the pipeline money. If we lose our pipeline money, that's a whole change, that's a game changer for this district. I'm not saying it's gonna happen. I'm saying it's, the conversation's with that. Then your final one, or the final two is obviously, you got Senate Bill 66. Senate Bill 66 is to change the 20-mil floor. So you get to the point where you get the 20-mil floor, because the state constitution says your school districts, you know, at the bare minimum, are going to get property tax money at the, at least 20 mils. If they lower that, that means that we would get less money in general, period. Now, there's different options inside of Senate Bill 66. So there, there could be the potential where it doesn't affect Marlington, but could affect other districts. So there's like four buckets inside of Senate Bill 66 that could, one of those four doesn't hurt us, the other three do. Those are all still in those discussion phases. The fourth looming be obviously, we don't control what the federal government does. What do they choose to do or not with, if they choose to close the Department of Education? Where they fund our federal money? You know, that's about $1 to $1.5 million. You know, so you're talking about all our title tutors. You're talking about our, our intervention specialists when it comes to IDEA money, things that have direct effect to education. Now, I know Renee spent some time as our federal programs coordinator at the ESC today, dealing with a great deal of time reviewing a lot of what's going on in the federal program side. It seems to be that the only good news out of that day was how they fund title, and IDEA's kind of already been taken care of, so it's not one that's a direct effect in what maybe the news media puts when they're talking about the Department of Education. But I feel like, you know, those people that were cut, where they say, you know, job losses weren't directly affected on the title side or IDEA or those kind of fiscal operations for schools. So that's, that's, that's good news, 'cause you gotta, you gotta kinda, you don't know how to respond when people ask, you know, the next question. So.
Yeah, what about this push to eliminate property taxes? There's a bill that's coming down, you know, talking about eliminating property taxes. I don't think it's realistic that it'll pass, but has anybody proposed, what's the alternative? Have they just said, "We're gonna cut money. Good luck"?
So.
Or is there an alternative in place that, okay, we don't fund it with property taxes, so we're gonna fund it with cigarette and alcohol tobacco taxes?
I have, I have not heard that. I, I kind of, you know, in the position you sit in, like I say, you sit in this, you know, part of your job is to oversee the district and the safety and security of students and worry about the curriculum. At the same time, you need to advocate for your school. You know, this is the first year that I, I guess I've had to spend a great deal of time trying to reach out to, as Mrs. Krupko said, do we reach out to our legislators? I mean, I can tell you as a board, I have met with State Representative Oslinger twice, no, three times, in the last three weeks. I've met with State Senator Jane Timken. I've met with State Representative Matt Kishman. I've met with State Representative Jim Thomas. I've met with Stark County Commissioner Richard Regulus, Stark County Commissioner Alan Harrell. All within the last two weeks. Not only myself, some of it's been myself personally with Rick Baxter. Some of it's been with a small group of superintendents where we can address, they have a common concern. They're, they're really not given a whole lot of guidance. I mean, at the end of the day, the most powerful man in Ohio is, is, is Matt Huff. And is he for public education? He is not. Okay? So, you know, I mean, there's no way, way I'm getting in the seat to have a conversation with this gentleman. Nobody is in this county. So the best we can hope for is the example I sent you in your board update, you know, enough pressure on Oslinger that they pushed back and gave you an idea where they're gonna head for the 20-mil floor. Okay, so that's, I'm hoping one of those buckets works out for us. I do not foresee the biennial, House Bill 96 with this budget. I basically have to, since this has come out, our admin team and, and our, specifically our central office team has been trying to find a way to come up with, how do we make another round of fiscally responsible cuts at the tune of a half a million dollars to be able to keep us where we're at for another year? And then we just move on.
And that's just to maintain the status quo. We're gonna have to cut half a million, a half a million dollars just to stay status quo.
So, yeah, so you give an example of Plain Local. After you go all the way to the far left, it's $3.5 million. You know, it's, it's interesting. We sat this week with our new county auditor, Angela, can you help me with her last name? So. And Alan Harrell, and, you know, it goes back to Mr. Swift's point.
Kinsey.
Angela Kinsey, you know, the, and when we talked to Senator Timken and, and the legislators, you know, they're all for economic development, so what Rick Baxter does everywhere else. But they call it like three big circles, at least for this area. So you got your one big circle, it's the economic development. You, you just gotta have it to be able to grow. Because I guess the overarching thing is enrollment. You know, everybody's enrollment in the county is basically on a decline of about 1% a year. That's just what it's been for the last 10 years or more. So how do you stop that? How do you reverse that trend? Well, that's economic development. What's the other part? Housing. Well, the housing study has come out. Where, where Stark County lacking in housing? We're lacking housing. And we're lacking housing because it's, 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 it's all of the above. So you got your, your young students that graduate that wanna get into their apartments. We don't have enough apartments for these young, young students. From there, when they go from apartments, they're gonna go to their first home, you know? Hopefully have a family. From there, they go to their second home, which might be a little larger and a little bit more that way. And then after that, they're finally gonna start downsizing to a smaller home, and then the retirement home, and then the goodbye home. I mean, that's how, you know, that circle life, however you wanna look at it. But then you got that.
Fun story.
You know, but you have that, that, we lack that. I mean, that's, but that's, that's, if you read, if you read the housing study, that's what they're saying. We're missing all of the above. You know, we don't have, we don't have that, that layout of housing across the board. You know, we have pockets of things that fit, but we don't have enough in Stark County to do that.
In Stark, okay, in Stark County.
In Stark County. So you know, we're, 'cause that's where you're trying to draw. You're trying to keep people there. And then obviously the partnerships you have with your, you know, your, your colleges, your universities, and how we add to that. So it doesn't help when the governor comes in and says, "I'm gonna cut you this much money", when at the end of the day, you know, Plain Local said it best. He goes, you know, the superintendent Plain just looked at him and said, "Listen, all of us, we're, we're a service industry. Where do we spend our money? We spend our money on people." You can't, I, he goes, "I can't cut $7 million." He just doubled that because that's what's gonna cost him over the course. "I can't cut $7 million from paper, gasoline, or purchase, purchase services. The only way I'm gonna cut $7 million is to cut people. So if I wanna cut people, I'm gonna cut programs." But at the same time, you need programs to be able to fall into your economic development, to follow in, to keep people here in housing. And the people that wanna live here wanna be able to go to schools where there's programs that offer, and you want people to stay. So you're right. We have to advocate, you know, I mean, I have spent more time than I thought I would ever imagine trying to at least explain that Marlington exists and the effects, you know, you may not see it in Columbus, but you're seeing it how it's here. So I just wanna give you a Stark County view. Now, in the next few months, I'm gonna give you views on a lot of things that all come from released data, from our CUP report, from the Department of Education and workforce. Things that directly come from that, that I'll be able to share, to share with you. But you need to be aware that I am working very hard on trying to fiscally find a way to come up with a half a million dollars because I really don't, you know, if we don't, unfortunately, he's already been met with Columbus to kind of slowly update our forecast that'll be coming out in May to adjust to based on this current budgetary scenario. And the answer, go back to his original question, how does this happen? How is it 5% for us and different for others? The, the best answer I can tell you, and very, I don't know the formula in detail. I don't know if anybody does when it comes to the CUP Patterson affair funding formula that's changed. But the two main components are property valuations and enrollment. Now, we've been on the guarantee, okay? So if you look up there, we've been on the guarantee, and I think Fairless has been on the guarantee. So if you look at Fairless Local, they're also at 5%, just like us. 5.3%, 10%, just like us. They're identical. The two districts in Marlington on the guarantee, and I think Plain. There's three. I think three of us are on the guarantee. So what that means, we're just consistently getting the same amount of money that we got back in 2020. Now, with the new governor's plan, they're just basically saying, "No more guarantee." So it's kind of saying, "Okay, Marlington, Alan Harrell just came in and just did your evaluations. Your property values in Marlington Local Schools went up 30% as a whole. So you are wealthy district. So based on the fact that your district is wealthy, and your enrollment over the last 10 years has continued to trend downwards, as has everybody else."
Do they look at the number of kids we have on free lunches?
It does, that does not play into the budget.
Maybe it should.
You take those two, those are the two large factors that kind of tie into that. And I, and I know there's other factors, but those are the two big ones. So we, I just wanted to give you a snapshot. I will get way more better objective as we get into April, as we get into May. I will be sharing more concrete data. So again, this is speculative.
They've already done three and four revisions on all these bills.
Correct. So our hope, obviously, is it isn't this. Our hope is it's less. How about just, give us what we got before? I'm not even looking to get more money, just, you know, I mean, I never thought we'd get in the day and age where we're not even looking at asking for inflationary costs. We just want to get the same amount we got the year before, and we'll deal with, we'll deal with it. But, so, like I said, this is, this has been within the last week that we've got this sent to us from Columbus. And so hopefully that will change in a better and not worse. So we'll go from there.
I don't, is it valid or more valid, more effective to put things in writing? At your county superintendent's meetings, have they talked about, as a county, getting every school board to send a letter and sign up, sign off with the superintendents? And, and to send them with a wave of information?
They, they don't care. You know, it's a...
Well, they need to care if they wanna get reelected, to be honest with you.
The attorney.
Because the people are not gonna wanna pay 80%.
The same guys keep getting reelected in Columbus and then doing the same thing without any real care about...
Now, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting together a letter that would say, you know, "Here's the potential legislation that's looming, and if you have any concerns or thought on it, you know, here's who, you know, reach out to your legislators and make, you make your decision from there." There's a, in Stark County, it's, it's a, they say, you know, you cautiously walk optimistically because, I mean, at the end of the day, those legislators were voted in most recently. We're a very conservative county as a whole, you know? So, you know, I, I would say that many of our legislators in the state of Ohio, but even possibly in Stark County, are very supportive of the direction this is going. So. There's, but so it's, you just gotta be, you don't wanna, you don't wanna be spiteful from a, from a, from an administration or a board end, at the same time, you don't wanna take people off either. So.
There's got to be a bridge.
They don't seem to care about taking off.
Well, there's, there's got to be a bridge.
I will happily draft a letter. I will share it with the board. You bless it, then we will happily have that sent out. It's not a problem. But that has been discussion. No one is, in Stark County has done that yet. It's still... This is such a fast-moving wave right now of consistent legislation that just keeps getting introduced day after day. No different than we heard Ed Holland the other night. You know, any different night, you get a different special update sent from Neola because things change so rapidly in Columbus that you could feel strongly about one thing one day, and the next day completely changes. So all I can tell you is I'm gonna continue to keep advocating for Marlington, and hopefully we'll get some change. But you have a lot of superintendents that are in the same boat, that are advocating the best they can for hopefully no changes that will affect their district from 20-mil floor to the biennial budget. Then you got other districts that aren't saying a word because they're getting money. They're in the black, and they're getting more.
Wow.
You know, and I don't know that answer.
Right.
So they're kind of like, "I don't really wanna get involved."
They just flip a coin, or they pull these names out of a hat.
So.
Some committee.
And I, and this, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what's coming the next few months from now, that, things that I'll be able to brief you on. And as I said, I, I know I do send, you know, I guess, you know, moving on, I, I do send community newsletter once or twice a year when I get a chance, you know? So I'm gonna try to, you know, Bob and I talked, there's gonna be a, you know, we'll be sending one out with a superintendent update that's gonna talk about, you know, things we've done with staffing, our capital improvements, curriculum, and then obviously the finances and the forecast, the looming forecast. The, the things that are looming out there that we need to be prepared for, and what we've done well to kind of keep us in the position of where we're at. I'm very optimistic, as always. I, I think we can weather any storm. It's just a matter of, this one, this one gets, makes me a little nervous. But until it's all said and done come June, July, I'm not gonna go, "Oh, the sky's falling." We just need to be prepared for what is coming, and we don't, we wanna be cautious on how we move forward with our staffing, how we move forward with our purchase services and so forth, which is what, on the administrative side, we've talked about, you know? That's kind of where we're at. That's where I'm at in my update.
Thank you.
Yep.
Public participation. Did anyone sign up to speak?
No.
Old business? None? Right? New business?
All right, new business. Item number one, as you know, by law, twice a year, we need to do a report on bullying. So we have our bullying report for the first half of the 2024, 2025 school year.
Not to be skeptical, we've had no bullying in any building, anywhere.
So I'm gonna tell you that report's gonna look different in June than it does today. That I, that I can tell you. But for this first half of the year, when we specifically send out to the administrators, ask, they're gonna have to follow what's actually been documented, you know, based on what their criteria is in our board policy. That's not to say that somebody didn't report bullying. That's not to say they didn't research or do it.
Okay.
It's just based on the fact that they have that, based on what our policy says, that's what the administrators turn to. You want, do you want me to sit here and tell you that there's probably no kid in the last six months that has not been bullied in our, in our buildings? I'm gonna say that's probably an incorrect statement. I'm just gonna tell you what's been reported to our office and that.
Okay.
Be careful on your recommendation right there. You're just gonna recommend... So I'm gonna state it 'cause that's incorrect.
Sorry, do you want me to speak on a turn?
No. I'm just gonna do, I would just wanna recommend the motion to approve the bullying report in our K-12 buildings as presented in Exhibit A.
Some of them.
Second.
Second.
Okay, do you, do you see the recommended...
I do.
Okay. That'll be corrected.
Okay.
Okay. All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
I know. Number two, this is the program of studies, recommend the motion to approve the high school program of study as shown in Exhibit B and C.
Some of them.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Item number three, recommend the motion to approve the resolution as presented for the Stark County Schools Council of Government Cooperative Advertising and Receiving bids for integrated bus units in Exhibit D.
Some of them. Second.
This is not for us to buy any buses, this is just giving us the opportunity to be part of the cooperative bus purchasing program that we are with every year.
Yep.
As we look into that for bidding purposes.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Item number four, recommend the motion that the board continue to participation in the inner district open enrollment program, policy 5113, for the 2025-26 school year for grades K through 12.
Some of them.
This is just our open enrollment that we do every year, as Ed mentioned, um, this is something I also agree that we continue to move forward with, we don't, you know, we, we, we have our criteria based on class sizes and what we currently need or don't need on a yearly basis.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Item number five, recommend the motion that the board continues participation in the intra-district open enrollment program, policy 5313.01, for the 2025-26 school year for grades kindergarten through fifth.
Some of them.
This just allows any of our students that live in a specific township, if they wish to go to a, uh, one of our neighboring districts, they have that ability to do so.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Item number six is, uh, recommend to approve the resolution as shown in Exhibit E, which is an electricity RFP, uh, RFP.
Some of them.
Second.
So, this is just authorizing very similar to the buses. Basically, this authorizes the Stark County Schools Council of Governments to, that we can join in for their electric aggregate to save district, our district money. Bob can elaborate where they're at with that, too.
Yeah, we, being in Ohio Edison District, we've been outside of their group, if you will, for bidding in the past, and so they made the effort for us, and I think one other district, too, um, so that we could, they negotiated with them to give us the same rate that was being obtained through the other electric companies, if you will. And, um, it looks real good. We, I just received word this week that their rate that they're able to secure, uh, is four and a half cents per kilowatt hour, and we're at 6.33 right now.
Nice.
So, actually should have some savings. So, I was quite pleased that that came in, um, that way, so it looks really encouraging.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Item number seven, recommend them to approve the resolution as shown in Exhibit F. This is the special education update, Senate Bill 29, that was discussed using model policies. Um, you guys got a first and second, I'm sorry.
Some of them. Second.
Again, this is, was brought up with Ed Holland, this is a requirement by law now from the Department of Education and Workforce. We ought, we have, every year since I've been here, used the model, the state Ohio model policies to service our special education students. We're now required to, that the board knows that and passes a resolution for that, and then we send that into the Department of Education and Workforce.
Call the roll.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Um, item number eight is not a vote, it's just to recommend the board review the following resolutions from Volume 43, Number One, uh, the Edward revisions, uh, and corrections, so these are the policies that were reviewed Tuesday night in our work session. Just to let you know, this is your first reading. Any questions over the next month, please reach out and let us know. Item number nine, I'm going to start off with, we'll get the first and second, recommend the approval of the community reinvestment area agreement between the City of Alliance and R, and, uh, RFM, 1P, uh, MPI Labels, basically. It's RFM 1P Holdings, but it's MPI Labels.
Some of them.
Second.
Okay. This is, you know, this is a discussion piece, so in the back of your packet, all the way in the back, is a, what the City of Alliance sent to us, uh, I did send this in a board update to tell you that this was, this was going to be talked about in February, uh, you know, so this is obviously something as a board you need to discuss in open session. So, MPI Labels, we currently get, you know, like any other business on the, uh, that resides in Marlington Local Schools, we're getting their, their property taxes, investment, things like that, which is fantastic. MPI Labels has done so well, they want to just expand. So, they're not, they're asking for what they call, it's called a CRA, it's a Community Reinvestment, so they want to add a 19,500 square foot, uh, I guess I would call, I don't want to call it a pool barn, but they want to add that, you know, off the side of their facility there on Main Street. This will add 10 new full-time jobs and two part-time jobs. Okay?
MPI, Ellen.
MPI would be if you come off Sawburg, you go down Main, you have the old Terry's Tire Town Building that used to be a baseball academy, and next to that, I think is MPI Labels, is right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
I think that's where we're at.
Do you have a plan to see bring to, or...
They might, but they want to expand here.
Okay.
Uh, so, of course, I met with the City of Alliance, Rick Baxter, multiple times, you know, uh, where MPI is at, is that CRA, is they're asking for tax relief for just the addition, so CRA is just for the addition, they're asking for tax relief for the addition for 15 years, that's all they can ask for, for the addition. So, my response is if you want me to bring this to the board, which I have no problem bringing to the board, is, let's just say MPI chooses to do this 19,500 square foot addition on their own, and they don't even ask the board's permission, which they don't need to, they can expand, that means that we would be getting, uh, property tax values from this expansion. How much money would that be to Marlington Local Schools? So, Bob did some math, we talked to John Oates and Alan Harrell, they all came back with the same conclusion, it's anywhere between $8,500 and $11,500 a year.
Oh.
Based on that smaller expansion, I guess, that's how, that's, that's what they come up with.
What was the amounts again?
Between $8,500 and $11,500 is where they, is that, is that right, Bob?
Yeah, one calculation that had came out to $12,802.
Okay.
So, the upper end might be a little higher than what Dan said, but...
So...
But there, but we don't know for certain, that would be like, uh, this would probably, what I just mentioned, probably be more like the maximum based on how it appraises afterwards. It'll probably be less, more like in line with the numbers Dan said, because they don't often use the full construction cost, I guess, when they set the value of it.
So, for 15 years, with those, between those two, it'd be either 127.5 to 172.5.
In that 15-year period, so...
15-year period.
They're, what they have said, that doesn't mean, I'm just telling you what they have said, because where the, how the board votes is completely up to the board. Uh, what they have said, they said they, they really can't move forward with, with doing this without, this helps them, you know, I, okay, I, I do like that they're adding 10 new jobs, I do know, you know, that there's two trains of thought, it's either just an absolute hard no, um, period from the board for any tax relief or anything, like I've already been very clear, as he, as Rick talked about, Washington Hills. I think, uh, I can tell you, I've sat in four of their meetings with the, the developers from Canton to Cleveland, and the lawyers from Cleveland, and the Washington Hills owners. And they have, obviously, what their request was, was for a TIF for new homes and property. You, I, that was a hard no, I wouldn't even bring it to the board. The only money we get in general at a blessing is from our property taxpayers, so that is not ever, that would never be one that I feel would even be a recommendation from me in a, any type of fiscally responsible manner. And they completely understood, it took them a while to understand that we're on a guarantee that bringing, you know, even building 200 new homes or apartments in our, in the current way, bringing in new students to our district has its pros and cons, because we're, we're only set on X amount of dollars, so you get to the point where if you have, if you got, if I get 100 new students tomorrow, well, that's fine, I can place them in classrooms, but I'm going to need more staff. Well, you need more staff, that costs money, well, you, that's why we don't have money, so you gotta go back to your taxpayers, you, you can't do that, it's a very fine, you gotta look at all the options, so it's very interesting how you, how you look at everything. So, they understood that, so it took four meetings to get them to get to that point, but they understood that, so they, uh, they asked me not to attend anymore for a while, so that was fine. Uh, the reason I bring this to you is their request was regardless of how you vote, they wanted to bring it to you, this is, I, I am more apt to look at when businesses in our community wish to expand, when it brings in more people, and when the expansion's over, they're still going to be in existence, it's going to bring our district more money. I think it's worth the board making a decision moving forward, as Mr. Baxter said tonight, there's going to be a few other larger expansions. I know what they are, I just, you know, this isn't going to be the only, there's going to be another one coming, our, coming down, that's going to be a much larger expansion looking to help, and it's, it's going to be a good thing for our district in the long run, too, so, but there's no guarantee, like, if these businesses want to come or not, so let's just stick to this one, that's where we're at. They're asking for basically, it's not a TIF, it's a CRA, as you see in front of you, it's for tax relief for 15 years, and I gave you the number that we got from the auditor, and then Bob also did his numbers. Uh, if you wish to table that, that's fine, and you want to come, you want to sit on this for a month, there is no way to, you, you know, we haven't had a, you know, you can't, this isn't an exec session conversation, this is just a new business, this, this is public conversation, so, uh, we can table this for a month if you wish, I don't want to wait any longer, I'd like to let MPI Labels know, I think they were hoping to start here sooner than later. Uh, if you want to vote on it tonight, that's fine, but, um, it's really up to you, that this might give you some time to think about it, read through it, if you have any questions, I could follow back up with the City of Alliance or us if you want, if you just wish to table it for, we'll be re-meeting again here in about three weeks, three and a half weeks.
What's your opinion?
Are you looking for feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd vote on it.
You would vote on it, so?
Well, if Mrs. Krepko says wait, Mark says we could vote, Mr. Hagan's not here. I guess we could wait, Josh is here.
Let's wait till Josh is here, I mean, I'm, I'm skeptical right now, I mean, I've always been supportive of TIFs and CRAs and understand the importance that those have in our community. Uh, but we just got told tonight that we're going to be looking for half a million, and MPI wants to give that, you know, give, give them 200,000 over the course of 15 years. It's hard, because so many people are telling us, we're not getting money, that we're going to have to transform what we do, why shouldn't they have to build their building without losing tax revenue over, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm really conflicted here, I don't know how, how I feel.
I think, I think it's fair to, I think it's fair to table it till Josh gets back, that gives you guys some time to think about it, and, uh, we can, we can re-talk about it in April, if that's okay? I just...
Is there a tabling that?
Yeah, I would table that, if that's okay. Uh, do you have to have a motion to table it? I don't know. Because you seconded the motion to vote on it.
Right, to vote on it.
So, do I need to make another motion to table this?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think so.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to table the community reinvestment area agreement with the City of Alliance and MPI Labels for one month.
Some of them.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 10, Board of, Board of Education meeting schedule. Uh, I have mentioned to you that we have typically gone to the third, you know, we approve in January our yearly schedule for the third Thursday of, of every month, um, I'm, I basically, there is a conflict in my schedule on the third Thursday, uh, I've asked if the board, I would make, I'd like to make a motion to move our regular date and time of our regular meetings to the second Thursday of each month, or, or any other alternate date that you deem in agreement with.
The motion is for the second.
Basically, it'll be a week earlier than normal. Instead of the third Thursday, it'd be the second Thursday.
Which we're doing this.
Which is what we're currently doing.
This is right now?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
I, we need a motion. I am out on the second, uh, or for April, on that Thursday, first meeting, not that it should affect the whole year's schedule or when you set the regular meeting, but just so you know, um, April 10th, I'm out.
So, I'm, I'm basically, that's two things, we're, we're setting the yearly schedule for the second Tuesday, and then we'll talk about...
Second Thursday.
We'll talk about the next month, the second Thursday, we'll talk about April's board meeting at the end of the agenda tonight.
Okay.
There you go, that sounds perfect, you know, when we set the schedule.
If you have a different date, I just wanted to talk before I make the motion.
I'm good with the second Thursday.
So, I'm going to recommend a motion to us, to establish a date and time and place for regular meetings for the Marlington Local Board of Education as the second Thursday of each month at 6:00 PM in the DLZ.
Some of them.
Second.
And it's, of course, to finish the motions at Marlington High School, said Board of Education may set an alternate date or other locations determined by the board at the conclusion of meetings.
Do we, do we do the motion?
No, we're going to cut it out.
I just finished the, you, the first and second.
It's right there.
Sorry. I jumped the gun.
Um, I have talked to each, each of you, that this, you know, this was something we were going to talk about in February, I just kind of put it out in an email that I obviously said, if, if you don't want to change it, it's fine, I'll readjust my schedule, it was just a conflict with me, but that's what...
It's fine. Call the roll.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Uh, final item, item number 11, recommend the approval of the updated administrative salary schedule and new latchkey hourly schedule as presented in Exhibit G and H.
Some of them. Second.
Question?
All right. The, the administrative salary schedule is, is not updated, is, it's updated as per the certified negotiated contract, in my opinion, they, they follow a me-too, so, you guys approved the certified contract in December, that, you know, so next year, the certified gets a base increase of two and a half percent, that, that's the same thing that principals would get. I think it's only fair that you see, you, you, we also approved that, and maybe that's not been done in the past, that's just my opinion as, as superintendent, so there is no change in the administrative salary schedule, with the exception of it follows now what, you know, the updated base raises that the, the teachers get, it follows suit, which always has, it's been that way for 20 years.
It's just in writing now?
It's always been in writing, I'm just not sure it's been shared with the board.
Oh, okay.
The last time this administrative salary schedule's been actually, been presented to the board was probably when Jim Nicodema was here. Uh, that's the last person that's actually messed with, so...
Right. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Oh, if, so, okay, I'd like to just mention what's up with the latchkey salary schedule as well, too.
All right.
Um, that's just an increase from right now, 1070 an hour to 1248 an hour. Um, this is one of the positions that in the contract book, actually ends up being less than minimum wage.
Okay.
And so, we've manually had to increase it each year, because it was set by a board resolution, I think back in 2009, that it was a certain rate, and we have to just meet the federal guidelines. So, I'm kind of lining it up with another salary schedule that we have, um, for the cafeteria and playground monitors, so that it just automatically gets updated every year. And also protects us a little bit, um, some of our jobs here can, um, and this was one of them, that can result in ACA penalties, like that we're not, uh, insurance becomes unaffordable per the federal government if a person doesn't make enough money, the way it works. And we can actually get fines of like $300 a month. So, I'm like, it's, it's not a lot of money as far as the budget goes, but I wanted you to understand the rationale for increasing that.
And this, this affects three people. We have three latchkey monitors.
Okay. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Well, Treasurers' Agenda.
First item is the minutes. I'd like to recommend approval of the minutes from the January 7th, regular and organizational meetings.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
The next item is the, are the financial reports. Um, with the timing of the organizational meeting being a little early, we did not approve, or you did not, as a board, approve the December reports. So, we really have three months' worth of reports here, December, January, and February. The three reports to be approved are the financial summary, which shows all our balances by fund, the cash reconciliation for each month, and the list of each of the checks issued in each month. I'd like to recommend that the board approve these reports.
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Anything to point out?
A couple of quick highlights related to February, really, since the other two are water under the bridge in a lot of ways. End of February, we ended with total fund balance of $11,245,150.59, of which, uh, we're to focus in on the general fund. The general fund ended February with a balance of... Is... Let's see, I think that's January. Oh, here we go. The general fund ended February with a balance of $8,797,476.57. Um, if you look at the financial summary, and I know there's a lot of pages there, but I'll just point out one thing. In February, the Capital Projects Fund, you'll see an unencumbered balance of about $2.6 million. That's because it's been updated to, with the purchase order for the roof project. The big roof project, $2.7 million this summer. So, um, that will be coming soon. And they'll start, start that project. Uh, if there's any questions on the check, of the issued checks, I'd be happy to address those as well, too. I could point out just a couple of things as I see them here, too. It'll help. You'll see a couple expenditures, ones for about 4,500, the others for about 1,400. The Consumers National Bank, that's a, those are Visa charges. Those are for teams going to state this year, which they used the credit card for hotel and travel. Cutting-edge finishes, $11,800. That was for painting at Lexington. Um, I think we discussed that project at that point in time, but it was for painting the walls, the kind of damage you could say after the asbestos repairs that had taken place. Um, playground equipment to Game Time. Game Time is the vendor, $13,000. That was for all three, each, each elementary receives some equipment.
So, do we, we pay and feed a child and adolescent, and then they, do they also bill students individually? How does that work?
So, we have a, we have like, it's through, very similar through, it's called Starkmar. So, all the Stark County schools are combined into that, and then, so some use a different... We use Child and Adolescent Services, so we get, Starkmar picks up a large portion of what we call consultation hours, or, you know, so we have X amount of hours per building where Jody Fellers or Ashlyn Mitchell work with our, our students. If based on what Jody or Ashlyn, uh, feel would be something that would be a continued basis, then they would, would go into intake. So, then they ask the parents to, uh, meet, and they do this at CNA, and then that process gets billed then through their insurance, their, their Medicaid, whatever. The nice thing about having those partnerships within our building is, um, these parents then don't have to have their, drive their students to CNA for any type of, uh, meetings that they would have. It's all done within the confines of the building during any available time they have in between their academic instruction.
And we still get updates on anything that's happened with, well, just a warning that's from the Stark County Sheriff's Department?
We do. We have handle with care. Uh, it started about, about two months ago, so as those come in, then, um, they go directly to Deputy Collins and Deputy Miller, Deputy Miller them. They, Collins send those to me by, uh, 6:00 or 7:00 AM. I then download them, and then send those to the appropriate principal as needed.
Okay, 'cause we were down for a while on it.
We were down for a good while.
So, it's back up and running?
Correct.
Okay.
We good? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
I'd like to make a recommendation that the board approve the revenue and appropriation revisions as presented.
Some move.
Second.
And a couple notes in regard to this. As you'll see on the revenue revisions, actually, the appropriation revisions also, most of the entries are in the 500-numbered funds, which are federal grants. And these adjustments are basically lining those up with our latest known, uh, grant award amounts and what we have remaining to spend in some. Uh, one of the larger ones there you see is the migrant grant, which is, uh, basically being zeroed out. Um, and there's also, uh, another grant, the 499 Fund. We're appropriating $8,210.41. That's another grant that Mr. Evinich was able to secure, uh, for use with AEDs and security cameras, safety-type devices.
Okay. Uh, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the resolution accepting the rates and amounts from the Stark County Auditor as presented.
Some of...
Second.
This is normal over here right now.
Was that Kathy or?
It's me.
I'm trying to recognize the voice. Yeah, sorry. Karen.
Me.
What did you say, Dan?
He just, this is what we do every year, correct?
Yeah, we do this every year. This is, uh, essentially, the, the county auditor provides us with a document that, uh, estimates how much revenue would be generated by, by our levies in total. And so, you can see it's broken down by, for us, general fund and permanent improvement fund.
Okay.
It's broken down, too, there's two columns, uh, one for the amount inside the 10 million limitation and the amount outside the 10 mil limitation, which basically just goes back to statute for how much you're allowed to tax without approval of the voters. So...
We're gonna need more of that.
We're gonna need more of that.
Okay.
I like how, I like how some of those levies are from 1970, 1980, 1968, 1969, and then there's like a 20-year gap and no new money, and then...
There's been another 20-year gap.
Another 20-year gap with no new money. Uh, I guess maybe we're due to hit one. Bob, play the lottery for us.
Yeah, but this is, a lot to communicate now with all these legislative changes. I mean, uh, to be clear on what the needs are, the school, with what's happening in Columbus.
There's legis, consolidates.
Yeah.
Or they are made continuous.
They're continuous, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
I would like to recommend that the board approve the donations that were received in January, February, and March.
Some move.
Second.
Can I read those?
I will.
Robertson Heating Supply, $300 for the high school robotics team. From Alliance First Friends Church, $2,000 to the 222 group that meets here at the high school. D. Hoff Flower Group, $100 donation to academic recognition. Mr. and Mrs. Gunula, $250 for Marlington Wrestling. Mr. and Mrs. Woodruff, $100 to the Marlington Athletic Department. Ms. Karen McKaisik, to the Marlington Athletic Department, $50.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, yes. Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay, on to personnel. I'm going to... I'm, I'm gonna break the personnel up into three sections tonight. So, we're gonna start with, we're gonna do, I'm gonna do administrative contracts. We always do in March. I'm gonna do that, uh, separately. Uh, then, we're gonna, I would, if the board's okay, we will consent the rest of personnel, with the exception of number eight, preferred sub hire, and number 10, supplemental hires. I will abstain from making recommendations, and Mr. Foss will make the recommendations.
For what?
Eight and 10.
For eight and 10.
Go with it. You'll see there when we get there.
Okay. Oh, got it.
Number one, administrative contracts. Recommend the motion to approve the following administrative contracts. John Yanni Spandell, elementary school principal, from 8-1-2025 to 7-31-2028. Mike Farrell, high school principal, 8-1-2025 to 7-31-2028. Michael Rizaletti, middle school principal, 8-1-2025 to 7-31-2028. Nick Evinich, people service director, 8-1-2025 to 7-31-2028. And Renee Kaylee, curriculum director, 8-1-2025 to 7-31-2028.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
I, I assume that you've made your evaluations of these individuals, and that they come with your recommendation?
I would not put them on if they did not come with my recommendation. Correct. It's, it's standard three-year that we do with our administrators. Um, they, by law, have to be evaluated every year. As I stated, I think, in my board update last week, uh, the continuity of having a consistent team is critical to us to continue to move forward as we had the last three years. You know, it takes time to build relationships, build culture, and, you know, everybody has strengths and weaknesses, as do I, and we just, you know, take the constructive criticism and move on.
All right, good. Any other questions, or? Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Okay, second, I would like, we'll recommend the motion that we're gonna consent the rest of the personnel, with the exception of number eight, preferred sub hires, and number 10, supplemental hires. The rest will be under consent, and I will review those now.
Some move.
Second.
So, we do have a classified retirement. That would just be, uh, Mr. Hoover, one of our longstanding bus drivers. We have a, a few classified resignations, which are some custodians and latchkey supervisors, recess monitors. Some are at the end of the school year, some are most recently. We have a supplemental resignation, uh, we had a couple there. We have one certified staff hire. That's, uh, you know, be our science teacher here at the high school, replacing Lynn Francis. We're very excited to get her on board.
Excellent.
Uh, we have classified staff hire. Uh, we have some cooks. We have some cooks leaving. These will be, gonna be effective, some are effective now, some are effective, uh, going into next year. Uh, certified staff transfer. We're just transferring one of our staff members from one position to another. We have some classified substitute hires. We have a supplemental pay correction for our counselors. They were on the wrong step at the high school, from step two to three. And we have a leave request for one of our custodians.
Okay. What's a CVI instructor?
It's what Chris Marman does.
Okay.
He's, uh, so it's, it used to be the, uh, if you were in school here, OWE. I like, you, you like, you know, so it's a kind of a workforce, or even a side of it. Career-based instruction.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Foss?
Number eight.
Coming up.
Number eight.
Um, are we consenting eight and 10 together, or just do eight and 10?
Sure.
All right, and this is for, there's eight and 10, preferred sub hire and supplemental hires. I'd like to recommend a motion that the board approve these items.
Some move.
Second.
Going to the mark.
The reason for Bob's recommendation is, uh, my daughter's a track coach. Last year, I cannot recommend, my daughter's continued to be track coach, and she is a sub, one of many subs in our district that can work for us as needed, so I cannot rate that recommendation.
Great. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Okay. Upcoming events, uh, starting March, I wanna make sure I say this right, it's the right date. It is not the right day. All right. March 27th is the high scho, is the musical. So, the musical is Grease. So, if you get a chance, come out and see the musical. Our students have been putting on a ton of work on this, so, uh, we have, you know, our staff has been in part of this, so it's just, we always do an excellent job. So, if you get a chance, starting on that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, uh, you know, try to come out and see the musical. Uh, April 4th, we have a PD Day. April 7th is National Honor Society Inductions. I think you got invitations for that Tuesday night air thing. Obviously, our spring breeze is coming up, uh, April 17th through the 21st. So, that's just that from an upcoming.
Breeze.
Uh... Technically, this is up to you guys. Our next Board of Education meeting, based on the new schedule, would be April 10th at 6:00 PM. Be with the recommendation for the next board meeting. Now, Mr. Foss has said that he is, he is actually, uh, out of town.
Our Treasurers' Annual Con...
Treasurers' Conference is that day. Treasurer's conference is that day, so he would not be here. So your option is to stick to the 10th and one of you would be assigned the treasurer's responsibility, not a recommendation, I think, or we would look at a different date that week.
I think that's a better option.
Yeah, I take notes all the time.
Let's change the date again.
It's just for April.
Just for April. Do you wanna do Tuesday the 8th?
The 15th or the 8th?
The 15th, you're getting into spring breeze. I am not available in that week at all.
It's spring breeze, yeah. April 8th is the...
April 8th is a Tuesday, could work, or April 9th. I know Mr. Hagin isn't here, so we could follow up later, but if you wanna set the date, if we'd have to switch it, we obviously could, through Board approval.
I'd rather do Tuesday, but I can do Wednesday.
Tuesday, the 8th.
That work, Mr. Ryan?
Does the 8th work?
Okay.
Okay, Tuesday.
All right, so we are...
On April 8th.
So we're looking at the next Board of Education meeting will be on April 8th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the DLZ.
Okay. Perfect.
Look at me, I have it.
Is it 6:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
In the DLZ.
Does that have to be motioned?
No, we typically just announce when the regular, next regular meeting will be. So just for the record, again, it's, the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, April 8th, 6:00 PM here in the high school DLZ.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Thank you and good night.
All right. All right.